Good evening, I'm gonna call the September's Business Meeting in order. Statement of adequate notice by Board President pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon Vios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Thursday, September 20th, 2018. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, roll call please.
Callie?
Present.
DeCaro?
Present.
DePrima?
Here.
Dineoff?
Lent?
Present.
Reed?
Here.
Singh?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Quorum exist?
Very well, Mr. Mayor, let's stand for the President's Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Very well, thank you. Code of Ethics Corner for the month of September. Mr. Reed?
The Board member will refuse to surrender his/her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain, or for the gain of friends.
We have to Code of Ethics Corner for the month of September. I think we have a little hiccup here, and we'll get it ironed out. Do you want to try it again, Mr. Reed?
That was about a month back.
That's okay, that's fine. So, we just reviewed last month, which is gonna be in a minute, so now we're going to go on until the, for the month of September.
And so this month, the Board member will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, he/she will provide accurate information, and in concert with fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. A little bit better?
Absolutely, we had a review of August's Code of Ethics, and now we had September's, so we had a good review. Thank you, Mr. Reed, much appreciated. Moving forward, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Lent, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. DeCaro. Any concern, revisions, with the minutes? I'm not seeing any roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Report of student representative to the Board. Tonight, we have Dylan Nowinski with us, he's the new student representative, and it's all yours, sir. Thank you, young man.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me tonight. I just want to say, we have the club fair coming up at the beginning of October, and we have youth football night next Saturday, that's our next big home game. That's a special event we look forward to every night. We invite all the kids from other football teams and the cheerleaders to come play on the track and the field with other players. And we're planning our pink out, and we're looking for new fundraising opportunities for those affected by cancer in our building. And the main focus of the school right now would be the club fair, and at our first President's Council meeting, we had 100% attendance with all of our clubs, with over 70 clubs in our school. So that's about it for September, thank you, guys.
Wonderful, it's a busy time, September, and I appreciate your report, Dylan.
Thank you.
And welcome, you're a big part of what we do as a Board of Education, and we look forward to your report on a monthly basis.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. All right, recognition, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sedino.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna recognize some of our staff that have exceeded in the world of technology, and it's a very special recognition, it's not just given out in any school district, any staff, these staff members had to work very hard for this. So we're gonna move the Board of Education to recognize the following staff members for being named Microsoft Innovative Education Experts for the 2018-19 school year. Mr. Christopher Biriga, from Carl Sandberg School. Ms. Fallon Quillis, she is a teacher at Old Bridge High School. Scott Titmus, who's our tech integration specialist for the district. And Mr. Jimmy Anizelli, who was a social studies teacher at Salk School, but now is also a tech integration specialist within the district. If everyone could go to the dais. And our Director of Technology Services, Ms. Moran will be there.
Good evening, everybody. I want to tell you a little bit about the Microsoft Innovative Expert, Educator Expert Program. There are 15 Microsoft Innovative Experts in New Jersey, and we are honored to have four right here in Old Bridge, so it is quite an accomplishment. Fallon, Chris, and Jim, this is their first time recognized as an innovative expert, and they have been an integral part of our tech integration in the classroom. They've volunteered, they've worked with their colleagues, they've worked with their students to bring them forward. Fallon, Jim, and Scott are founding members of the Delta Team, which we are working in coordination with Dr. Cascone and the Curriculum Department, and we're, it's a team effort, I want to say I am so honored and proud of these teachers, but I also have to say, Scott Titmus has exceeded beyond Microsoft Innovative Education Expert, and this is his honor for the second year in a row, but in addition, he's earned Skype Master Teacher, and he was chosen one of two Microsoft Innovative Educator Fellow for the Northeast Region. So this means that there are only 14 in the entire country, 14 experts in the country, and we have him here. So I can't tell you how happy I am, how proud I am, and how thrilled I am to be able to work with them every day. So congratulations, and thank you for all you've done, for our kids and for our teachers. Jim? Fallon? Chris?
And Scott gets a special one. Because he's got lots of honors. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, we have to do our usual shot. Huh? Oh, you do. Okay. Squeezing. Yes. What happened? Oh, I didn't want my glasses on.
Thank you, Ms. Moran, and Chris Fallon, Scott, and James, congratulations to you, and always an honor to acknowledge your successes.
Should I just go right to Superintendent's Report while we're there? Or you have to?
Let's approve.
Let's approve recognition first. May I have a motion to move recognition this evening?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Mr. Caro, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Callie, thank you. Comments or concerns? Well, I don't see any, but I'll speak for Jeff Dineoff. Unfortunately, Jeff had a previous engagement, and he couldn't be here this evening, and he is the Chairman of the Technology Committee, and he's been working very closely with Roseanne's team to ensure that the technology is improved in our district, and he conveys to the Board what the needs are. And I can say wholeheartedly that Roseanne's team has done a tremendous job, and this Board of Education and the administration have embraced technology. Technology is the highway of the future for information, and this school district has done an incredible job with promoting that and implementing it through our schools, and giving our students the finest technology to learn. So with that said, and on behalf of Jeff and the entire Board, thank you, Roseanne, for your hard work with your team.
It's a team effort.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, roll call, Mr. Mayor.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution one and two pass.
Very well. Now we're moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Again, Mr. Sedino.
Thank you. September is always an exciting time, lots of schools were opening up, were initiating new plans, were demonstrating new software and getting new programs, and this year was no exception. Schools opened for almost everyone on September 6th, and it went off very well. Salk School, of course, joined us online on September 12th, and by the 13th, we had our first delayed opening at the high school in GNC, as power lines went down. You plan for everything, and you have a backup plan, and it's a good thing that you do, because you never know what's gonna happen. But it, anything could turn out to be not advantageous for students if it wasn't for the work of our exceptional staff, that always comes together through tough times and works together to make sure that our children have everything they need. I know each day that I was at Salk School, the staff there was, you know, was begging to get in, and when they could get in there, I'd say 98% of them were there during the holiday to make sure the classrooms were ready. So I want to thank all of them publicly, and thank everyone who made it possible throughout the community. We even had a community member anonymously donate monies to any staff member from Salk School who lost personal property due to the conditions there, and that person worked with me on it and came up with a good idea, and as of today, we've given back almost $1,000 towards staff members who have lost personal property. So we're very happy about that, and again, the community pulling together to help each other out. Then we also have our acknowledgements and our awards that we receive, and this year, on the heels of our Unification Award, last year, we have the Unified Generation received a $10,000 grant from Special Olympics for our program here, and expanding our programs to other schools. We're definitely expanding within our own community. And as of this week, Memorial School became a future-ready school. We're very proud of the work that was put in there to receive that acknowledgement, and that just came in. And we have lots of programs going on, just this, this weekend alone is Old Bridge Day, September 22nd, at the Township, and that begins at noon, and it'll be a great day for everyone to come out and check out everything we have here going on that makes Old Bridge a great place to live and learn. And on the October 5th through the 7th will be the Old Bridge Schools Family Fall Fest, and that's gonna be another great event to get together and celebrate. I do want to put on the spot our members of CPAG, because I know this year, they're starting something new. There are the Friends of Old Bridge Schools Gala, and what date is that, just so?
Is that the 10th?
Yes, the Septa, whoever, I'm not sure.
It's February 8th.
February 8th, okay. First Annual, February 8th, Charity Ball, and it'll be at the Grand Marquise, so everybody put that early in to your, and all the proceeds will actually help our students in our classrooms. Very nice, Septa, thank you. And then I'm gonna go in, right into progress towards goals, because we have new goals, and I wanted to review them that the Board will be voting on tonight. You can find them in the back, under Board Business, page 21. So the first goal will be, and again, keeping with the mindset of excellence in education, to continue in expanding educational opportunities for all students in accordance with our district's strategic plan. We're entering our third year with the strategic plan, and we have seen a great many strides going that direction, I'm sorry, second year. And then we're looking towards fiscal resilience to improve our fiscal reserves and preparation for significant decreases in state aid, as the state has already told us what they're preparing to do over the next six years. And keeping up with educating the whole child. We have a belief that we are responsible for children's education, even beyond when they leave us. It's not a successful life unless you're successful as a child going out into the workplace and living a happy, healthy life. So to increase public awareness about the risk factors that impact child awareness, whether they're in our doors or beyond, we want to make sure that our students are healthy and making the right choices. So I think the Board did a great job in putting together those goals for the district, and they have their own goals as a Board, and that's to continue to work towards achieving Board certification by continuing to receive professional development from the New Jersey School Boards Association, program three times during the upcoming year, and to embrace the cultural diversity of our Board of Education meetings, that is reflective of our community. I think that is a significant mindset for the Board to adopt, because if you look around on our meetings, it doesn't really reflect the diversity of our community, and we want to reflect the diversity of the community. If you go out into Old Bridge from different neighborhoods, there's many different dialects spoken, there's many different cultural backgrounds that are represented, but they're not always represented here, and we want to be investigatory as to why that's happening, and invite all cultures and climates, all cultures to come here and feel accepted, and we're gonna do that throughout the year by having some interpreters here, maybe to interpret some of the work that we're doing in foreign languages, and to embrace other cultures, and like we said at the last meeting, maybe chocolate chip cookies won't be the cookies we have one day, maybe there'll be some desserts from other cultures just to spice it up a little bit and make it more diverse. So I think it's some great goals for the upcoming year, and it'll make it a very interesting year. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sedino. We'll have more on the Board Goals and District Goals as we go along into our agenda, but moving forward, we're going to, who for, correspondence, any correspondence, Mr. Mayor? No correspondence. Special Committee Reports. We'll start from my right to left? No? Very well, I know Jeff had, but Jeff is unavailable, so we'll get his report in, on the October meeting. Facilities use? There is no.
Mr. Dunn, we will have a curriculum meeting next Wednesday, I believe, okay? At 7 o'clock at the Administration Building, so you're welcome to attend, thank you.
So September 26th at 7:00 PM, okay, at the Torrey Administration Building here on the campus, very well, thank you, Mr. Solakowski.
Mr. Dunn, since you did mention that Mr. Dineoff is out, he has a technology meeting scheduled for the 27th also.
Very well, that'll be Thursday, September 27th, and that is also at the Torrey Administration Building here on campus. Okay, so moving forward, we're gonna open it for the Hearing of the Residents on Agenda Items Only, so feel free, anything that's published in tonight's agenda, this is the time to speak and ask the questions before the Board considers the contents of this agenda. Do I see anyone? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Andrew Lewis, Vice President, OBA. Question on non-certificated personnel other, item 17. The substitute security officers, I have two questions, is this a new position? 17, page 12. Yeah, number 17 on page 12, sorry.
Is it a, no, we have substitute security officers.
And so can you explain a little bit about the position, please?
Do you, do you want to answer that, Dave?
From my understanding, there's a fixed number of officers, and sometimes they take vacations, sick days, so that we're not caught in a lurch, and it's a safety issue. They complete the same job at the same rate, just they fill in the days that those people aren't there.
Thanks.
Very well, anyone else on Agenda Items Only? Going once, going twice, don't see anyone else, so we're gonna close this portion of the meeting, and we're gonna continue on with the agenda. Okay, we're here at Policy. May I have a motion, please, to move item one under Policy?
Callie'll motion.
Thank you, Ms. Callie, can I have a second, please?
DeCaro'll second.
Thank you, Ms. DeCaro. Any conversation or concern? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
No.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Very well, Mr. Mayor, thank you, moving forward, Curriculum, Items 1 through 7, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima, second?
Callie'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Any concern or conversation on curriculum and professional development? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 7 pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, moving forward, we're on Athletics. Item 1, may I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Singh.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any concern or conversation? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving forward, Finance, Items 1 through 11, may I have a motion to move?
DeCaro'll move.
Thank you, Ms. DeCaro. May I have a second?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Discussion, concern with Finance? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 11 pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, moving forward, Non-Certificated Personnel Office, Items 1 through 3, may I have a motion to move?
Callie'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Callie.
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any concern, discussion, conversation? Not seeing any, roll call, please, Mr. Mayor?
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 3 pass.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna skip Non-Certificated Personnel Operational since there is nothing, we're moving to Non-Certificated Personnel Other, Items 1 through 17. May I have a motion to move?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima, can I have a second?
DeCaro'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Caro. Discussion, concern, or conversation? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 17 pass.
Very well, Mr. Mayor, thank you, moving forward to Certificated Personnel, Items 1 through 18, may I have a motion to move?
Reed'll motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Singh. Any concern, conversation, or discussion on certificated personnel?
Yeah, Mr. Dunn, we just have two minor corrections on page 15. About a third of the way down the page, Anthony Greeter, it says he, in the left, in the right-hand column, effective 10/6, that should be 10/8, 18, and two individuals down, Nora Ryan, it says on the right-hand column, 9/20, that should be 9/21.
Very well, Mr. Mayor. As amended? May I have a concern or conversation, discussion, not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 18 pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, moving forward, Non-Certificated Personnel, Transportation, Items 1 through 4, may I have a motion to move?
Lent will move it.
Thank you, Ms. Lent.
DeCaro will second.
Thank you, DeCaro, Mr. Caro. Concern, conversation, or discussion? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 4 pass.
Very well, moving forward, Supplies, Equipment, and Services, Item Number 1, may I have a motion to move, please?
Callie'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Callie, second, please?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any concern, conversation, or discussion on Supplies, Equipment, and Services? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Very well, moving forward, we're at Transportation, Items 1 through 4, may I have a motion to move?
Callie'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Callie, may I have a second?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any concerns, conversation, discussion? Not seeing any, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima? Resolutions 1 through 4 pass.
Fantastic. Moving forward, Miscellaneous, Item Number 1, may I have a motion, please?
DeCaro will motion.
Thank you, Ms. DeCaro. May I have a second?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any concern or conversation? Not seeing any? Roll call, Mr. Marra?
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Fantastic. Moving forward, Board Secretary and Board Business, Items 1 through 3, may I have a motion to move, please?
Reed will motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. May I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Any concerns, conversation, or discussion? I don't see my board members wanting to speak, but I'll speak up real quick on board goals for 2018, 2019. The Board met back earlier in September to discuss our goals, and we felt that it was important that we embrace our township's cultural diversity. We're very fortunate that Olbridge is a melting pot of a lot of different ethnicities, religions, et cetera, and we're very proud of that. You go to the football game last Friday night, it was unbelievable how diverse our school population is, and that makes us a better place. So the Board felt that we wanted to make everyone inclusive, we want to bring everyone involved to the table here because we feel that we need to embrace what makes Olbridge so wonderful. So we felt that promoting the cultural diversity at our board meetings would be beneficial. We want to bring everyone in. We don't want to push people away, so we felt that there may be people who would like to come, but they may feel a little out of sorts, so we want to embrace different cultures. So one board meeting, we may embrace the Hispanic community, or we may embrace the German community, or we may embrace the Indian community. We have so many different communities here in this wonderful town, and we want to bring that to this board meeting. And I think that will be a good way of bringing this town together and keeping us as one, and we're very fortunate. So with that said, we felt that that's gonna be one of our board goals moving forward for 2018, 2019. We'll have more that we will bring to the forefront, but like David Sidedino said, we may have an interpreter one night, we may have food from a culture another night, we may have a presentation during another board meeting. So we want to really bring this in and embrace it because it is Olbridge. Olbridge is an incredible place, and we want to definitely share our diversity with everyone. So with that said, may I have roll call, please? Yes?
Can I just say something? I apologize. Just, I wanted to speak to number 2, that the Board is acknowledging that the goal for the 2017-18 school year to increase board member participation at school and community activities and events has been met. And while that is not an official goal in writing for this year, I want to thank my fellow board members, and I want to thank the teachers and the administrators for inviting us to so many things. We did our best to have at least one board member at anything we were invited to attend, and I want to encourage that to continue, even though it's not an official board goal, I want to keep the ball rolling. I think, I think we as a group did a pretty good job of getting out there to anything where we were invited. And I want to thank Mr. Sidedino for consistently pushing out that email to remind administrators to let us know. That's it, thank you.
As Ms. Callie has just said, that it's important that the board members do participate and play an active role, not only at the PTA level, but also at the community level and also within the school community. You know, we need to be present and we need to show our support for our wonderful staff and to our parents, and of course, the children. And that's part of our responsibility, and this Board has embraced that goal that was set. I think we've done an extraordinary job, and we want to do it more. And going forward, I'm sure Ms. Callie will stress that because she was always like our little reminder saying, hey, you're on the calendar for this event, please be there. But no, it's important and it's a good thing. Yes, you're the official board nag, but that's a good nag because it's a great thing. Absolutely. I was just asking the Board President, so one of the events that we talked about, one of our meetings, we'd like to have someone who'd American Sign Language as well, so if we can get someone who's a volunteer in that, that'd be a great way to get our message out to everyone as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sidedino. We want to be progressive here. We want to, you know, bring everyone into the mix here, and that's a great suggestion, and sign language is important, and, you know, we need to cater to the deaf, and it's the right thing to do. All right, so roll call, Mr. Marra?
Singh? Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 3 pass.
Wonderful, Mr. Marra. So I'm gonna open it up to the Hearing of the Residents on any school-related matter. Now, this is the time to say the good, say the bad, say whatever is on your mind. You know, we want to hear everything, and it's important that we do. So I see Ms. Allison Boss would like to go up to the microphone. She's more than welcome to. That is... And also Ms. Miller from SEPTA, and it's all yours.
Thank you. Mr. Sidedino, thank you for just talking about our first annual charity ball, which Amber has been working very hard on, so we're really, hopefully, gonna really pull it off this year. It is our first one, so we're gonna kind of learn from our mistakes. Our flyer is gonna be going out, ooh, I'm sorry, down, okay. The flyer's gonna be going out shortly, we're just tweaking it a little bit. We need to wait for some tweaks on it, so hopefully, it'll be out there in the next couple of days. Yay, that'll be really great. Also, a lot of other good things going on for us. We are also sponsoring the Tricky Tray at the Fall Festival, so come and join us for that. We're gonna have people from SEPTA at the table for three days, long days. Also have some great, Teresa, you should come up here, support groups going on at SEPTA meetings also. Amber's gonna talk about hers, and we have another one that Ms. Teresa Burns started this year for us, so we're gonna have her come up, even though she's shaking her head no. Amber, go ahead.
Hello. First, I just wanted to talk about the charity ball that we're gonna be having. The date set is Friday, February 8th, so everybody, please mark your calendars. It's gonna be very unique because there's no baskets giveaways. We're gonna have DJ dancing, buffet, drinks. We're gonna do, raise a lot of money for special education and children with disabilities in Olbridge. It's gonna be a night out for everyone to put all their business aside. Our target is for parents and staff members and administration and local vendors to come out, buy tickets to support our cause in Olbridge. And in addition to dancing and drinking and eating, we're gonna have some local companies around the room who cater to children with disabilities and young adults and adults with disabilities, and they're going to set up tables and show us all of their brochures and all their different companies. We're looking at therapy centers, transitional planning communities, different agencies and companies, profit and nonprofit. They're gonna be set up around our charity ball so that educators, parents, staff members, everyone can enjoy the ball and walk around and be educated and pick up some brochures along the way to know what members of our community are doing to help us. Thank you. Oh, and lastly, an hour before the SEPTA meeting, every month, 6:30 to 7:30, I'm gonna be hosting in Room 15 at Glenn School, our Autism Parent Support Group for parents of children with autism. This is our third or fourth year, and we've been very successful. Basically, we just all come together, troubleshoot therapies and struggles in the home and the community, and we've been very successful, forming a lot of long friendships. And that's it, thank you. So...
Ms. Burns, can I?
What? Oh, yeah, Teresa Burns, Lawrence Harbor, not to step on Amber's toes, but yeah, we have two support groups going on. One is for, specifically for children who have autism, and then the other one is for 504 IEP plans.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your support always.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, thank you. You know, SEPTA and CPAG play a very critical role in our town and in our special needs program, and we're very fortunate that we have an incredible special needs program here in Olbridge. We have one of the finest in the state of New Jersey, and it really benefits our children. And as a parent of a special needs daughter who spent over 18 years of her life in this district as a child with special needs, I can tell you wholeheartedly that the staff, SEPTA, CPAG, everyone's heart is in the right place. And my daughter is in the position where she is is because of the love and compassion and the education that she received from this wonderful town and this district. So with that said, thank you, SEPTA, and Allison Boss, Ms. Miller, Teresa, everyone that's involved, Ms. Babic. It's wonderful, and go out on February 8th, go to the charity event. It's gonna be a great, great evening, and I'm sure it's gonna be a real good night, and it's for a great cause, so with that said, thank you again. Continuing with the Hearing of the Residents on any item that's good or bad here in the district, not seeing anyone else? Very well, we'll close that portion of this portion of the meeting. Any old business? New business?
I just have one thing.
Absolutely, Ms. Callie.
Keeping in line with the public relations and the good things that the Board's trying to do. During the Fall Festival on Sunday, I believe that's the 7th, at 1 o'clock, part of the Fall Festival is there's a trunk-or-treat, and the board members as individuals are sponsoring one of the trunks. So I think that's from 1 to 2, which leads right into the actual festival that begins that day at 2 o'clock. So come on out and trick-or-treat in our trunk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Anything else in the new business?
Mr. Dunn, I'd like to say one thing, please.
Absolutely, so we could do all of the good, so if you like, you know, we can go around at this point and...
One of us is new business.
New business thing, go ahead.
It's not really board or school-related, but I wanted to talk about the softball fundraiser. If anybody's interested on September 29th, next Saturday, I'm not sure of the times yet, but at Lombardi Complex, there's gonna be a softball tournament fundraiser for the Athanese family. I think everybody knows what happened this year. Again, it's not school nor board or related, it's pretty much community, and Olbridge is always a community that helps each other, and they will be using our facility, so that's why I'm talking about it. But please come out, if, I don't know if anybody here knows about it, is on a team or not, but if you want to come out and support them, the concession stand will be opened. I'm sure there'll be other ways of contributing for the family, so hope to see you there. I'm really not sure of the time, like I said, but I'm sure it'll be all over social media soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. It's gonna be an incredible day of playing softball for a wonderful cause. We all know Zach and what transpired, so come out and support. I know that there are teams being assembled, and there is an interest fee, but that can be found online. But again, Olbridge is a wonderful community. We do get, come together for items like this, and we do support families of who are in need, so this is a great situation. Anyone else before we move on? Okay, so with that said, we're gonna go to the audit of good. Whoever wants to say anything about, you know, the great things on the Board, what's going on in the school system, you can start. And I'll start from my right to left. Ms. Callie, go ahead. It's all yours.
Oops, microphone, that'd be good. Just short and sweet, I just wanted to offer my congratulations again to our staff who were recognized this evening. Keep up the good work. You are what makes Olbridge great. And I just, I know this is not a retirement, but I would be remiss if I did not mention, I guess it's a resignation rather than a retirement, so one of our staff members moving on, and that would be Ms. Vanderhoff. And I just, I don't know if she's listening, but just wanted to say thank you for everything, and you will be missed. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Mr. DeCaro, would you like to say anything?
Yes, welcome back, everyone. I hope everyone has adjusted to their schedules, parents, teachers, students alike. I hope everybody has adjusted and everybody's on the right track moving forward. I do want to also congratulate our Microsoft experts. Being on the Technology Committee with these people, it's just, it's just an amazing experience to watch them in action and to see what they can do, and I think the thing that really amazes me about these people is that they are, the excitement that they have for their job. I mean, I feel like it's not even work for them, it's just something that they really love to do. And it's, you know, congratulations, very well deserved, and they have a very good leader. Okay, and also thank you to SEPTA, you know, Allison, thank you for coming out. You know, you guys, you guys put in a lot of volunteer hours, and it's definitely appreciated. And I am really looking forward to this gala. I can't wait. It's going on my calendar as soon as I leave here. And congratulations, and, you know, keep it up. I mean, volunteer work is just the work of the heart. And, you know, it's very much appreciated, so thank you, and looking forward to a really great year.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro.
I don't really have much, but with technology, I'm technically not part of the committee, but I show up to all the meetings anyway, and it's amazing what these people do. Ms. Moran, thank you so much, and your staff. I mean, I'm still in the days of Pong compared to what you guys do, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. Ms. Lent?
I think everyone covered the thank yous and the congratulations, and so I don't have much to say. So just again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. How about you, Mr. Reed?
I would like to say welcome back to our staff and the students for a new year. And I too, with the, excuse me, the Technology Department, I sit on that committee, and I'm amazed at the things I hear and I see. They confuse me a lot, but I know they're doing all the right things. And again, I congratulate you people and continue to do what you're doing, and thank you, Roseanne.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Singh?
I also want to thank the group who is doing like a lot of work for special needs kids. I greatly appreciate your work, and Roseanne, you're the greatest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Mr. Solakowski?
Yes, I would like to congratulate all the new hirees. Have a good, productive year. And a special thanks to all our teachers. I have three grandkids in the system. They all came home, they're ecstatic about the teachers that they had, they love them. So thank you for the fantastic job you're doing. You're everyday heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solakowski. First, I want to just take two or three seconds to thank David Sidedino, Mr. Joe Marra, and Frank Frazita, and the entire maintenance staff of the Olbridge Public Schools. Obviously, we had some issues over at Salk Middle School regarding mold and the concerns that transpired there. And it was a monumental task to get those classrooms in the building ready for opening. Unfortunately, based upon the situation, we were a few days delayed. However, based upon my interaction with our fine team, they did an incredible job. They worked the weekends, they worked nights, they did everything they needed to do to ensure that our middle school on the south side of town was taken care of. And it's not an easy task, and there was a lot of worrying, there was a lot of concern, a lot of meetings, and a lot of time spent. And I want to sincerely thank them for a job well done because without their hard work and dedication and sincerity to make sure we had a great place to open for our kids, I think that we would still have some issues. But again, thank you, gentlemen, for the hard work that you guys did to get that school open. Number two, as we all know, the first day of school is always, has trials and tribulations, and I know that our Transportation Division did an incredible job on the first day. There was some complaints, obviously, when you have a new school year and when you're moving 9,000-plus kids and plus other children who go out for different services at different schools, yeah, there are going to be hiccups. And unfortunately, we did have a few hiccups, and again, you know, this administrative staff and our wonderful principals and staff members made items more bearable for our students, and our Transportation Division did an incredible job. And you know what? The first day is always tough. It's always tough, and, you know, it's a learning curve for the drivers and the parents and everyone involved. And I want to just recognize everyone for getting through it, and, you know, parents, we do have an incredible Transportation Division. We try to do our very best, and... Thank you, Mr. Solakowski. First, I want to just take two or three seconds to thank David Sidedino, Mr. Joe Marra, and Frank Frazita, and the entire maintenance staff of the Olbridge Public Schools. Obviously, we had some issues over at Salk Middle School regarding mold and the concerns that transpired there, and it was a monumental task to get those classrooms in the building ready for opening. Unfortunately, based upon the situation, we were a few days delayed. However, based upon my interaction with our fine team, they did an incredible job. They worked the weekends, they worked nights, they did everything they needed to do to ensure that our middle school on the south side of town was taken care of, and it's not an easy task, and there was a lot of worrying, there was a lot of concern, a lot of meetings, and a lot of time spent, and I want to sincerely thank them for a job well done because without their hard work and dedication and sincerity to make sure we had a great place to open for our kids, I think that we would still have some issues, but again, thank you, gentlemen, for the hard work that you guys did to get that school open. Number two, as we all know, the first day of school is always, has trials and tribulations, and I know that our transportation division did an incredible job on the first day. There was some complaints, obviously, when you have a new school year and when you're moving nine thousand plus kids and plus other children who go out for different services at different schools, yeah, there are going to be hiccups, and unfortunately, we did have a few hiccups, and again, you know, this administrative staff and our wonderful principals and staff members made items more bearable for our students, and our transportation division did an incredible job, and you know what, the first day is always tough. It's always tough, and, you know, it's a learning curve for the drivers and the parents and everyone involved, and I want to just recognize everyone for getting through it, and, you know, parents, we do have an incredible transportation division. We try to do our very best, and we will continue to do our best, and if there were any kind of issues, obviously, the board is here to listen. David Sidedino and his staff, our transportation division, we're here to get things right. So with that said, thank you for your patience, and things are working like a train schedule. Things have been perfect, as far as I know, being the chairman of the committee. I heard of a few issues on the first day, but we worked through them and made good, and things did become very good. With that said, I just want to say again, thank you for all the certificated staff, all the staff, building maintenance, principals, everyone involved in the first day of school was very successful, and moving forward, I'm looking to an incredible year of educational enrichment and more, and new accolades. So the administration has their, their goals set high, and we're with them one million percent, and I'm sure that we'll achieve all those high goals. With that said, we do need to go into executive session this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Parton, to explain why. Absolutely, Mr. Sidedino.
Just as reminded that I know Madison Park School, in memory of Gage Trazani, they're having the superhero day tomorrow. I'd encourage you to be district-wide, any staff member, student, administrator, anyone wants to wear a superhero shirt or something instead of wearing the usual boring shirt and tie. It's a simple way to remember a childhood died way too young, so take a Friday. Life's simple when you think about it that way. Have a good night.
Mr. Parton?
Yes, you need a motion for a brief executive session for matters of contract regarding your Jake Brown road property and personnel regarding the superintendent evaluation.
Perfect. May I have a motion, please, to go into an executive session to address the concerns that our attorney just expressed?
Reed will motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
DeCaro will second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Go in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stain, we're going into executive session.